I know he's here, but I don't see where did he go? Where did Dwayne go? Where did Dwayne go? Okay, maybe he went to the bathroom. Okay, all right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's on? Maybe it's not, is it on? Yes, it's on, okay. This is an older version, so you have to speak a little closer into the mic. Okay, so just want to welcome everybody. I appreciate you all scheduling another meeting with the Board of Supervisors. We know this is all crunch time, and I think we're all getting down to the final throes of our budget and our CIP. And even though we kind of squeezed this in, I feel like it'll be a really productive meeting for all of us. Just to kind of give you a heads up of where we are on our side. The Board hopes, plans to set our tax rate next Tuesday at our public hearing on the 24th. The county administrator has prepared a budget based on a 96-50 tax rate. But the Board of Supervisors ended up advertising our tax rate at 99, at .99. As you know, we can come in under that, but we are not allowed by law to go over that. We anticipate that our final budget work session is Tuesday, May 1st, which will be in between our 3 o'clock and our 7 o'clock meeting. So probably sometime between 4:30 and 5:00. And then after that meeting, we're going to be giving information to our budget staff and the county administrator to say where we want our budget, what we want it to look like in its final form for the next day, Tuesday, May 2nd. So we and our Board just found out about that today. Not a work session with you guys, our own budget. We hope to approve on Tuesday, May 2nd at... Excuse me, Wednesday, yes, thank you. And that would be a 2 o'clock meeting? Is that what we decided? Yeah, 2 to 4, okay, in our board chambers. So the CIP is, our main focus for tonight is talking about the CIP and how you all arrived at your priority list. And then also, as we have time, we'd like to just, you know, have a few more questions for you about your budget. We did hear from Tom Foley today that you all have deadlines, obviously, for sending contracts out to teachers. So if I, that's the other reason we would like to approve our budget on May 2nd. Is that going to give you all enough time to get your contracts out? Okay, yes, okay, perfect. So I think that's it. So I had talked to Ms. Healy about just starting the meeting where you all could kind of, don't need a PowerPoint presentation. I think we know where your priorities are, but just talk either individually or however you all would like to about how you arrived at the decisions that you made. And then we have some additional information that we'd just like to flesh out with the, with your Board and just to have a good collective conversation on how we best meet the needs of the community as it relates to facilities for our children in Stafford County. All right, any questions? Okay, Ms. Healy, I'll let you take it from here. And we have to remember that sometimes you have to have some of the mics off in order for the others to work.
The green light is on, so I'm assuming that it's working.
You are good.
All right, well, I'm just going to speak briefly, and then I'm going to reserve my time till we go through our Board. The priorities that we sent over to you were not composed lightly. We had a extended work session and discussion among, you know, our Board members. Then we had about a two-week period to think about it. We came back, and at the last board meeting, we actually voted on these priorities. And the purpose of that was so that we could respond to your request. The first priority is the purchase and renovation of Fredericksburg Christian School. And we believe that that would be very much helpful in making space in our existing schools for more students. Because it would give us 21 classrooms, 20 of which we would expect to open when the school opened, and that would be a year from the fall. It would be the same time that Moncur opens. And then we also added to that, as we discussed with you, improvements to the Gary Melchers complex. Now, the improvements to the Gary Melchers complex would not add any capacity, but they would add parity in terms of a lot of the facilities there. And I think you remember, Mrs. Bomke, from your time on the Board when you were the Head Start representative, it wasn't prime then. And while we've done, you know, some work, it still could use significant improvements, starting with the parking and then also inside. And that was about $4 million, Scott?
3.5.
3.5 million. And so we added that in because the Fredericksburg Christian School, the intention would be to open a Northern Head Start program there. And in the interest of parity, we wanted to, you know, to renovate the Gary Melchers complex as well. Although that would not be necessary to add the capacity for Fredericksburg Christian School. That would be, what I would say, would be an extra. The second one was to rebuild or renovate Ferry Farm Elementary School. And I think you'll remember that as well. In fact, I think that predated you. It's gone back 10 years ago. This Board came up with five elementary schools to renovate or rebuild. And Ferry Farms was the number five on there. Every school has been addressed except for Ferry Farms. So here we are 10 years later. We should be, according to our original plan, opening Ferry Farms in the next year. But not only are we not opening it, we don't even have anything going for it, for rebuild or renovation. So we were going to, you know, have that discussion with the Board because there would be a cost difference between a renovation and a rebuild. The advantage of a rebuild is it would give us an extra capacity of about 250 students, which is basically about 25%, you know, of an elementary school. That was the second priority of the Board. The next is the high school number six. And I'm sure every one of you has heard from the community about the desire to, you know, make sure that we are not going to have overcrowding in our high schools. And with our projections, that will be coming sooner than anyone would like it to be. And those are the projections that could be, you know, even sooner than that. Then we had rebuild Hartwood Elementary School on a new site. The primary thrust for this is that Hartwood is the only school we have on water and well in septic. And it's always been a matter of discussion. We've just made an investment in this, the septic system to, I think the cost was a little lower than we had projected originally, but still it was well over half a million dollars. That's, you know, that's going to be spent on that. But we haven't gotten to an in-depth discussion of what we would do with Hartwood. But, you know, my informal discussions with the Board, including Ms. Hazard, whose district it's in, is that it's not something we would take out of the inventory, that there would most likely be a use in Stafford County Public Schools for that school. But what we're trying to get away from is to have the high number of students in there in the event something were to occur, you know, with the well or the septic. Then the last item on our list was to build Elementary School 18. Some might look at the new rebuild of Hartwood as Elementary School 18 because it would be a brand-new school, and it would be an addition. So right now, we're calling, we're calling that a rebuild and calling Elementary School 18. But that was the last item on this list, and that was within the 10-year period. Now, you'll see, we put dates that we projected they would be needed, recognizing that that, you know, is not going to be within the financial parameters that the county has established for borrowing. But we thought it would be best to give you, you know, what we think is the date they'll be needed, and then, you know, we'll just have to go from there. But I'd like to give our members, you know, maximum of two minutes, if, you know, to just, you know, have a chance to give you their perspective, if they want to, you know, on these priorities, that's okay. So we'll start with, Ms. Hazard.
Okay, well, the School Board's Capital Project Priority List was formed really last summer. These are not new projects to anybody, based on anticipated growth and the age of some of our current buildings. But my opening comments are going to focus mostly on the immediate need, as I see it, the purchase of Fredericksburg Christian. To me, the availability of Fredericksburg Christian at this timing is kind of like the stars aligning to allow both Boards some time to address the rising enrollment projected throughout the rest of the division. As we're all aware, under the comprehensive plan, a school is considered full capacity when it reaches 90% of design or program capacity, depending. Today, system-wide in our elementary schools, we're operating at 93% capacity, system-wide, not including the 212 pre-K students. So an increase of about 135 elementary students will raise the capacity 1%. So it just gives some, sort of some idea of how that does. 11 of our 17 elementary schools are closed to transfers next year because they're full. So there are pockets of seats available in the division today. But with the future growth that's projected, schools like Conway and Burns do not stay under 90% for long, in my opinion. Also, the arrival of 40 students at Wide Water, that puts it, 40 students over 100% capacity today, is also a little bit concerning to me. So during the high school redistricting process, the School Board at the time indicated it was considering an elementary redistricting to be implemented when the new Moncur was opened. The thinking at the time was to redistrict in the north and move students, what I would call, east to west, if we could do that. That was sort of the way, that's where some of the pockets were. Because of the pre-K, it's sort of complicated that, because a lot of the schools now are full. But the thought was move River to Falmouth, for lack of a better way to do it. On the other hand, I would say in the south, schools like Hartwood and Rocky Run today are operating at 100% more capacity with no relief in sight. Falmouth may join the party soon. So in my opinion, in the south, the move is going to be from west to east because we are so heavily there. I would also note what I would call the central schools, Margaret Brent and Winding Creek, are both operating at over 100% at this time. So for this reason, I think the purchase of Fredericksburg Christian gives us some help across the division. The purchase price and modifications would be 1/3 to 1/4 the price of building a new elementary school and the added bonus of having a pad site on the property that could house another school building with a minimum of 21 classrooms could be built in the future. I will say, this purchase will not solve the rising problem of students, but I believe it gives us some time. I'll just make my final comment on the high school. The need for high school number six was made loud and clear at the high school redistricting meetings. Today, the high school system capacity is operating at 88% capacity across the division. So it only takes 93 students to raise that by 1%. I think we need to identify the location for this building ASAP, or as soon as possible, because we need to make sure that the priority for this high school does not slip because the capacity numbers dictate it, and our community has been very vocal about it. So those are just two things I would really want to highlight.
Thank you, Mrs. Hazard.
I'm not going to be repetitive, so I'm going to defer my time to my fellow board members.
Okay. Dr. Chase.
I just would like to take a second to thank those members who came to look at Fredericksburg Christian and at least have an open mind about it, thanks.
Yes, thank you. I don't have much to say and don't want to be repetitive either, but I just know that, you know, developments occur, and they're granted years before, and there is growth. And our children need schools, they need space, if you want to deal with smaller class sizes. And I know administration have kids that are in the school system. You do, everybody do, everybody wants a good school, good teachers. So just think about that for a moment, and think about the community. Don't think about politics, don't think about Republicans or Democrats. Think about what we're here for, to take care of the community, as you stated before, and the students and the teachers. So they need space, they need a place, and we need more. So with that said, I know you'll do the right thing with the sales stats, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate everyone's comments. Thanks for making the spread. Three of us were a little bit tardy because we had a disciplinary meeting where we're talking about some very serious things with the kids of the county.
I don't miss those days.
I know, I know, Ms. Bomke does not miss those days. I was myself, I was young, and Ms. Chase, so, thanks. Dr. Chase, I apologize, yes, yes.
Dwayne, can you move your mic a little closer, thanks?
So my comment's going to be focused on Ferry Farm, for the surprise. You can lower eyes now, please. However, you know, bottom line, bottom line of the front, right? 1957, not a lot of work had been done over the years. 2007, they said it was going to be $10 million, and the evaluation was $10 million of upgrades to get it to 2017 for a rebuild. None of that happened. And now we've come to the point where we're talking about parity of our kids across the county. So, you know, however, you know, these kids down in White Oak and Ferry Farm and Chatham and England Run that go to this school, and a lot of these families have been in this county for a long, long time paying taxes. And so when we talk about, forget about sending money to Ferry Farm, the idea of, oh my gosh, we have, we have a little bit of capacity problem at this school and that school. I mean, that's just not fair. And so I just hope that the Board of Supervisors and the School Board come to some realization. You know, even during the CIP oversight meetings, where I remember finding the budget, it wasn't all rebuild, rebuild, rebuild. It was just, please, do something for the kids in Ferry Farm, whether it's a renovation or something. So I'm just going to ask you, please, to take care of the kids down south, and those of you who have kids. It's time. All other schools have been either new or taken care of. It's really up to the folks sitting around this table whether this happens or not. I'll tell you, if this gets pushed out five more years, this won't happen. This school won't happen, so, so thank you very much for that.
Okay. All right, would anybody on our Board like to make any comments before we get into the handouts that our staff has prepared?
Do you mean just general?
Just general, yeah. Or even any questions about what's on their priority sheet?
I thought that's why we were here. I'll just go in order, Ben. For number one, Chairman Healy stated that it was a parity issue, and then Dwayne reiterated that. So I guess my question is, if we don't do Fredericksburg Christian School, then we don't do Gary Melchers Complex. Is that a good assumption? Well, Fredericksburg Christian School has been on the list. Melchers has not until now. And so it was put on as a parity issue, we're told. So my question is, if we don't buy Fredericksburg Christian School, does Gary Melchers Complex renovation come off the list?
We're going to have to relook at it. If, depending on what you decide, we're going to have to go back because the resources that are available, we're going to have to reevaluate. Now, when you said Fredericksburg Christian School's been on the list, I don't think it's ever been on the list. It just came up this year. And we just entered into a contract, you know, what, two months ago? So it's never been on the list. This was an opportunity that fell, you know, into our hands. It's the way I look at it. And I was, I was somewhat skeptic when this was first approached. And I said, nah, you know, what are we going to do with, you know, a half a school? And then, when I looked at it and saw the school, saw the possibility, looked at the dollar amounts, you know, it all clicked. It seemed to make sense that this would be a good investment for Stafford County in a facility that could be used to meet an immediate need for a Northern Head Start program. I think you know, you've heard, we have kids on the buses two hours each way going down to the Melchers Complex. So we have little four- and five-year-olds four hours a day on the bus. This would alleviate a lot of that. And it would allow us to consolidate our northern preschool classes, which right now are spread out. And the reason they're spread out is because they've been put wherever there was room. And we're already being told by staff, we're going to need more preschool classes next year. This is not going to stop. This is a state mandate. So it's an opportunity. If we don't, you know, if we're not able to buy it, then what we may do, of course we will. I mean, we're going to do what we need to do to educate the kids. But it would give some relief to the county in when that next new school is going to have to be built. Because it would essentially give us a half a school. It would give us 20 classrooms that we don't have now at a cost of 10.5, I think? I'll just round it out to 10.5. That's fully renovated. When we build a school, you know, we're looking, if we're building a few years in the future, I think we're looking at close to $40 million.
And I understand all that, and that's, that wasn't my question at all.
And I started out with your answer, Mr. Cavalier. The answer is, we, I can't say what our priorities are going to be because we're going to have to come back and work on it as a Board. I started out initially saying, these priorities were not produced lightly. They took discussion, they took thought, they took coming back and working on it. So I can't give you that answer.
I understand. But what I'm saying was that Fredericksburg Christian School was being discussed prior. We had discussed that in our committee meetings, and I mean, I don't, I'm...
Okay, I'm not on that committee, so...
Okay, but it absolutely positively was. And we didn't see anything on Gary Melchers Complex. And I'm not arguing the point that Gary Melchers doesn't need renovated. I'm just saying, if this is a parity issue, a north-south, let's call it that, issue, where if we do one, we have to do the other, then if that's it, then if we delete one, we have to delete the other, for sake of parity.
Well, we won't, we won't even have a north-south. We're only going to have the north if we get the Christian School. That's when we would have the north Head Start program. So the Head Starts program would stay where it is, it would all stay together. So it wouldn't be a matter of parity.
So if the mysticator?
I would just like to add, but obviously, if Fredericksburg Christian comes off of there, that, like we're saying, that has come up, an opportunity, it's times of the essence. If that comes off of there and we lose that opportunity, I don't believe that Gary Melchers, a renovation of Gary Melchers, that doesn't have any issues. You can stay as number one on our priorities, so, I think, just to be clear.
Well, that more answers my question, thanks.
Could I say something too?
Yes.
But we currently don't have parity with respect to early childhood, special education, and Head Start because children in the north are having to get on buses and drive substantially longer bus rides than children in the south.
Yeah, and I don't think we have parity across the Board everywhere. That's just, it's impossible to have complete parity. And I think we have another solution for this that we're not, that's not on the list yet either, so we'll get to that later. But the second thing was, and Dwayne, this is yours, and we've talked, and we had a good conversation. I liked your spreadsheets, and they made sense, if you think Ferry Farm's number one priority. But it says rebuild or renovate. The number on the CIP is 26 million, and some change. That's not enough for a rebuild. That's only enough for a renovation. And then, we haven't seen what that renovation entails either. So, one, let's choose rebuild or renovate. Two, let's find out what the renovate costs, because I don't know if there's stomach for a rebuild, to tell you the truth.
Right, and, no, thanks, Mr. Cavalier, that's exactly right. The, Ms. Bomke, I didn't have my mic on, the light was shining in there. It looked like it was on, but it wasn't. So, no, that's exactly right. I think we have an older evaluation of what the costs are. I think we have to reevaluate those costs on the school. It really comes to the point where I am, myself and my community, just, I mean, we just need something. I mean, you know, I mean, that...
So here, I think, is where we are, and the rest of the Board members can weigh in. We feel there's a need to address the issues at Ferry Farm, but we don't know what the rebuild costs are, and we don't know what the renovate costs are. So we understand it's a priority, but we need some numbers there, okay?
Ms. Bomke?
So, so that's one issue, okay.
And I'd like to add on that. If, what I would really like to see, because I think there are some improvements that we can do at Ferry Farm, I think that Ferry Farm is a priority. I mean, the fact that we've just been delaying any repair or improvements to Ferry Farm, I don't think it's a good idea. And so if there are things that we could do, maybe even out of cash, I would like to see a laundry list of what needs to be done at Ferry Farm with estimated costs. That might make it a lot easier as we rack and stack priorities. And I, you know, if you were at our budget meeting or heard about our budget meeting, there are certain things in our CIP budget or that we're looking at paying for out of cash that I'm not certain would, would rise above maybe a new HVAC system at Ferry Farm or, you know, repairing pest control at Ferry Farm, if I believe, you know, what has been said about Ferry Farm. So if we could at least get a laundry list of what needs to be done in estimated costs, that would be helpful as well.
And just, have you guys talked again? I know we talked about this, I think, the first year or two I was on the Board of Supervisors, or maybe the last couple of years on the School Board. There was some discussion at one point in time of moving some of the Head Start teachers and students up to Stafford Middle School. Do you all remember that conversation?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and that...
I got hard on that one.
Okay, okay.
And now we have students there, that's what the last redistricting did.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. And I wanted to bring newer, your new Board members up to speed on that, just so we would remember that institutional knowledge. There's no room there, okay? I'd say there's none, but I'm not going to say there's a lot. Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, yes.
Mrs. Bomke, Mr. Duran has some figures which we can, you know, share with you for the rebuild of Ferry Farms and the renovate, and it's going to depend on what fiscal year it begins with, so...
Do you have copies of that?
No, he just, he just, I just got it from him just now.
Total number, or is it a laundry list that I'm looking for?
No, this is the total number. She had started out the conversation saying, or you had said, we needed some numbers, so I don't know if you want me to...
You can just, do you want to give us the renovation and the...
Well, it depends on the fiscal year. I'll use fiscal year 2022, if it opened then.
How about just the totals?
Well, it's, it's, the total's going to vary. I'll give you the first year and the last year on this list, and then we'll share the list with you. The cost to rebuild, if it opened in fiscal year 2022, would be $38.83 million. If it opened in fiscal year 2032, 10 years later, it would be $52.2 million. And that's the increased cost of building.
Right, sure, the inflation, okay.
Now, the renovation cost for an opening in FY '22 would be $24.542 million. And then we have FY 2029 is the last year on this list. And this is the first time I've seen it, but I'm glad we have it to share. It's $30.197 million, and that was for the renovate. But we'll, we'll share all this with you.
Okay, so if we just talk about fiscal year '22 with the 24.5, what did you all have in mind there? Because when we did the other renovations, we had the flexibility of moving all the kids up to Stafford Middle School. We don't have that. Have you guys explored the trailers and how you would renovate that school, and how long it would take?
I'll tell you, there was a very rough order of magnitude discussion about that. Until we find, if we do indeed get this back in, on the CIP for a '22 or opening, then we will have to discuss. We have costs of trailers, and we think we know how many, what we would need. But there would be, you know, displacement of the children somewhere. And as you stated earlier, we didn't have, and Ms. Egan as well, we had, we had the opportunity those years with Stafford, I'm sorry, with Falmouth Elementary School and Grafton Village Elementary School. We had the opportunity to send all the kids at large, right, all the way over to that school because of the capacity at the time. But now that's not, we can't do that.
And is the price of the trailers, is that in the renovation numbers?
I'm seeing, yes. Yes, and it will take more than one year if we renovate. Because we will only be able to move a certain number of students out and work on a section of the school.
All right, does anybody else on the Board have any questions about Ferry Farm at this point? this point?
I'll just, I'll echo the idea that we need to do something for Ferry Farm sooner than later, because of the fact that, of this condition, and the fact that, as Ms. Healy says, it hasn't been done anything for a decade. And I would like to see the list of, you know, the laundry list, to see what it is. Because that makes a big question as to what is being done, what needs to be done. And if memory serves me, there's elements built in, Mr. Foley, you'll let me know if I'm wrong, but supposedly money in for various years for different projects. So that, in theory, I think it's $5 million on the bottom, I don't know how much goes for Ferry Farm. But in theory, if you do the renovation, then you would pull that money out of there as well. So that it's, there is funds, and I think what Ms. Mauer brought up of using other revenue sources and just the usual mentality might be a good solution to this as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Cavalier?
Well, you've got three elementary schools on the list here. And I do, Dwayne, I'm not going to say anything bad this time. I do agree that Ferry Farm Elementary School needs renovated. So you've got that on record now, okay?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Cavalier.
You're welcome. But you did mention in our conversation that that may then add some capacity to during that renovation.
Yes.
Because we're not seeing any details on these, so you've got a spoon in feet or something. So I'm seeing those.
Yeah, well, so the current, so under the current renovation numbers, we have under the program capacity, they're including a number of children in the basement of that school. Anyone knows who's been in the basement, some of my fellow board members, that that is not a capability, even though the numbers are built into that 750 number, without a major renovation of the basement, air quality and some other things in that basement to clean it up, those kids, those number of kids would not be available to take that. So in fact, that 750 number that you're seeing right now, you could just take out, how many kids did we add in for the basement?
It was one classroom.
One cla, just one classroom worth of children? So I think it was 25 or 30, 24 maybe?
Okay, so basically, the list that, we call it the stoplight chart. So we're not really increasing capacity there, we're bringing the school back up to the capacity that it was originally built at. Because I think that's the important terminology.
That's correct.
And that leads into my follow-on question here. For Hartwood Elementary School, I agree, that needs to be built on a site that's suitable with water sewer, public water sewer, at some point when we have that site available. And that's kind of in question, we all know that right now. And then you throw in, as your number five seed here, the Elementary School '18. All right, that's three improvements, or renovations, or rebuilds to three elementary schools, not counting Fredericksburg Christian School. Which the capacity numbers, the enrollment projections, don't justify that many extra seats. And that's, that, why do you have all three on there, I guess is my question. How do you justify that?
Well, and I think that will bring us to, if I could just interject, we...
Can I get an answer first, maybe?
Well, we've got charts on that.
Well, I've got charts right here, that I see all projections, so.
All right, well, we'll let them...
I don't need that, I've got this.
You want to hear from them.
I need to hear their rationale on why there are three elementary schools in here, and the numbers don't justify it.
Well, the numbers are projections. We're projecting 10 years out, which is a challenge. If it came to be that we didn't need that last elementary school, you know, this could be revised. You asked us for our priorities today over the next 10 years, and this was our best estimate of the priorities. I would say, looking at the list, if something were to drop, it would be the last priority. We don't know exactly how many students are coming. I don't think anybody's ever going to be able to say for sure how many we're going to have in 10 years. But we do know from experience that when the building increases in Stafford County, when the economy is good, people move to Stafford County. One of the reasons is they move because of our schools. I think you've heard it, we hear it, Mr. Cohen knows. But when they move with young children, they're going to go to elementary school. It's just going to, it's going to depend on the capacity of the, you know, the economy, and who's moving in. I mean, some of our schools, as Mrs. Mauer knows from our district in Rock Hill, some of our schools don't have the number of students that they've had in the past. But that's because some of our subdivisions are what we call aging out. The students have graduated from school, but the families are still living in the homes. They don't have the young children there that are in the schools. But when those families leave and a new family moves in, most likely they will have children with them. So it's, you know, it's a matter of doing the best we could with, between the projections and projecting the need.
But the fact remains is that if we did all those things, it would put us way over our CIP cap. So it's not affordable. So choices have to be made. Something's got to go from that list. It's not all feasible right now.
But we're not spending the money. I mean, this, to open, I mean, we're talking about 10 years from now for this last elementary school. It's not going to put you over...
It's a plan to spend money, though.
Well...
We'd like to have a good plan to spend money in a wise fashion.
All right, mysticator.
Mr. Cavalier, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said, I agree that something needs to happen with a 1950 school, and I agree that Hartwood needs to be moved to public. So that was the basis for having it on there. Now, I think, again, to reiterate, that Elementary School '18 fell to number five because Fredericksburg Christian added the few seats that we needed to prolong that process to not, to not have Elementary School '18 at number two or three, right? So that allowed us to put it at number five, with the understanding that we're not going to have all five of these things done in the next 10 years. We understand that that puts us way over our debt capacity. So that's why we're here to have this conversation. But if you're asking why it's on there in the way that it's on there, it's because 1950s, well-inseptic, and Fredericksburg Christian allows us to open up some much-needed seats, as well as the couple seats that we're going to get from doing those renovations and rebuilds to our current schools.
Yeah, hang on, Mr. Cohen, and then over to Ms. Hazard.
Just very quickly, if it's possible to get, I mean, ideally, the basement is not the best place to have the students. I would be curious to see the cost of bringing the basement up to usable versus adding on in the back, which you could do. I mean, you could actually put in a new library in the back and make it, because the current library is a confined space. And so, I would just be curious how it would compare to add on to the back, not worry about doing, making the basement a full-fledged classroom area, which would be a great deal of money. And do that, and that would actually create some space by moving the library, you could actually put another room in the back as well. So that would get you a couple more seats, but it also would bring them up to maybe a 20th century library instead of the library they have now. So I understand the laundry list aspect, and I'm just curious about a more modern laundry list, rather than just the traditional one. Thank you.
Ms. Hazard?
Sure. Jack, I'm going to speak, I'm the minority on the board on this, so I'm going to be upfront. I am more in favor of if we're really going to be looking at capacity, which as the, as the group said, we were going to prioritize capacity generally. And I'm not, I have told Dwayne, I am supportive of that. But I feel like knowing what's going on in the south, knowing how we have to redistrict and move west to east, so it's kind of the opposite of the north, I do struggle if we don't add some kind of capacity at a school. Because in the south, we're at 105%, I mean, down there. And if we really did a, you know, rebuild, it's 200, 250 seats. And I viewed it as doing both of those together to get us, that and Hartwood, to get us in a better sense in the south. Because our issues are, really not going to move someone from Hartwood probably to Park Ridge. So I'm just, my view, but I will tell you, I'm being upfront, it's the minority opinion. But I feel like we have two tracks of enrollment projections that we are dealing with, how they're going down there. And I feel like if some of the subdivisions that Gary and I are both aware of in Hartwood get going, it's going to get even more crowded in Hartwood, and it's going to squeeze that area. And that is my longer-term concern, that Wesley, just some other ones, if they get going, they're large, and we are then squeezed in the south. So I am in the minority, but I really think, if we're going to look at Ferry Farm, and Dwayne, I want it, but you, we and I, we've talked about it, I'm supportive, that I struggle if we don't put much capacity in there, because we're going to need it, just based on the numbers. And why, and you're saying, why do we say that we need schools in '25 to, under our enrollment projections, we're at 100 to 105% capacity throughout the elementary division when we hit '25 to '26. That's, that's a lot of people. Now, yes, there are some green schools, but however, that is six years from now. And we know that special ed and our pre-K programs continue to grow, and a couple classrooms at a time. By the time we get six years out, if we add two to three a year, that's 18 classrooms. And so, I actually think we're right on the numbers, but I think, I would like us to do as much as we can to push that. So that's why I'm, I know, I'm going back to my first speech. But I just wanted to tell you, there was some reason of why we did it, but I still have major concern about the south. I just felt like I had to share it.
All right, Ms. Mauer?
Okay, so on the 100, 105% capacity, in '25, '26, that's if we use the program capacity, but if we pull out all of those kids, then that obviously goes down into the 90, under 100% capacity. And so it's really difficult to say we will be, but that's at program capacity and not assuming that we don't have any expansion. One of the questions I do have is, we talk about 20 classrooms at Fredericksburg Christian School, but we're getting ready to have an entirely empty school. How many classrooms are in that school?
36.
There are 36. So that one, if we utilize that one, then we would have room to grow.
Yes, and it would cost about $22 million, Mr. Haran, $22 million to renovate that, and it could be opened, not the year that Moncur opens, but the year after that.
But we have children in it now?
Yes.
And are you leaving that furniture in there? You're buying all-new furniture for the new Moncur Elementary School?
I don't think we're getting all-new. No, we're moving it.
We're buying roughly 50% of the furniture.
And you're taking 50% of the other furniture. All righty, thank you.
Of course, we will need somewhat different furniture for the preschools and the Head Start. If that's what actually ends up in there than what we use for our traditional, at least, I'd say, two through five.
Well, if you're replacing 50% of the furniture, you would be buying more furniture anyway.
Well, but the 50% that we're not replacing.
So you need all-new furniture for the preschool and Head Start?
I don't, I don't, this is all hypothetical, because, I mean, we've just heard through the grapevine that you all want us to use Moncur for it. So if you want to tell us officially that that's what you want us to do, then we can go back and we can do our planning, and we can come back to you with some accurate answers. But right now, you know, we are hearing rumors and...
But there are 38 classrooms, 36.
36, 36 classrooms.
Madam Chair? Yeah, so, yes, Ms. Egan?
I just want to remind my board that we were told that we needed to rebuild Moncur, because that facility, where it's at, was very dangerous for our students. So we're going to have a lot of splaining to do if we put kids back in that building again, after we just spent all that money on a brand-new elementary school.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Since we're just being hypothetical at this point, and you just heard about the possible reuse of Moncur, which I think everybody in this room has heard about by now, let me ask you this. Could Moncur be used for pre-K in the north, Head Start in the north, and the alternative school? And then what are you paying for the leased space at Mary Washington? I heard it's not a lot, but would theoretically, all those three programs fit within the footprint of Moncur?
I don't think I want my three- or four-year-old to be in the same building with children who have been kicked out of the school for discipline issues.
There's a whole separate wing there at Moncur.
Kind of take offense to that, because my son was in the alternative school. So let me just tell you, he was in the alternative school and he wasn't kicked out of Mountain View. So not all bad kids are in the alternative school. So let me start with that. And, but secondly, you had those kids, those bad kids, as you described them, in the same school at the Gary Melchers complex. So what changed? They only transferred out within the last year.
I've only been on the board for, since January, so I wasn't there when Melchers was being used for both.
So, Madam Chair, my question still stands, I don't know if you've, since you haven't had a...
Well, I don't have an answer right now, but certainly, you know, we can make anything work within reason. And what we would need to do is to go back and have our staff take a look at it. One thing I think that you would be interested in would be the cost, because there will be, you know, certain cost. I had asked, when I heard these rumors earlier today, I asked Dr. Benson if he could have the cost of renovating Moncur, but that was with respect to the preschool and the early, the Head Start and the early childhood education. I had not gotten the rumor yet about the alternative school, so that may very well change. But the estimate for renovating and to open the year after Moncur, the new Moncur opens, because we would need that year to renovate, which is exactly what we were proposing for the Fredericksburg Christian School, taking the next year and renovating, is $22 million.
Okay.
$22 million for the renovation. So that's about double what it is for the Fredericksburg Christian School, but we'd only have half the space.
Madam Chair, I'm a little confused. You indicated just now that you asked Dr. Benson today how much it would cost to renovate Moncur Elementary.
Yes.
And eight hours later, you have an answer. I don't understand that. I do not understand.
We discussed this at the joint CIP meeting, because this was part of the recommendation before Mr. Cavalier decided that he didn't want to recommend that any longer, because it didn't work out as far as the property access and...
So you put all this together prior to today?
This has been discussed prior to, it was discussed...
So this is not a, so this is not really a bombshell for you, you knew it was going to, you've heard this. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, looks, Dr. Benson, were you, did you want to share something?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just that, you know, Moncur has been on and off, and maybe back on the table at this point. And so, you know, we had looked at the potential cost of renovating it for an elementary school. There would have to be some adjustments that would be made in order for it to serve pre-K population, both Head Start and early childhood special education program. There's one other element that we need to look into. Our alternative education program serves students from other divisions, and they do pay tuition to do that. We would need to make sure that they wouldn't see the additional travel time to go to a northern facility as being an issue that might not work for them. But that's something we would have to explore, if that's something that there's interest in.
Well, and I think it's kind of like when we looked at Head Start four years ago, we found out where all the Head Start kids were all over the school division. And the same thing with the alternative ed schools, kids. So, you know, they're, it just depends on where they're located. So, you know, that's something that Mr. Cavalier brought up, and, you know, that's the first that our board has heard of. I mean, he mentioned to me earlier today. So the whole conversation of Moncur, as we, the last we left it, we told you we were going to go out and do a feasibility study, and look at whether or not this property is really, really marketable right now. And the feasibility came back, and we're not convinced, you know, as you all know, with Amazon and everything else on the internet, big-box stores aren't what they used to be. And they weren't what they used to be when we made this decision how many years ago, okay? So it's a conversation that we need to have, and I think it's what our board wants to talk about, is can we look at Moncur? And we started there, and then we kind of shifted gears, and then the Fredericksburg Christian School came online as an opportunity. But here's one of our big concerns about Fredericksburg Christian School, that it's basically going to be almost filled by the time you open it. And if we remember correctly, what we heard you say was, you wanted to kind of keep all the programs there, you know, and not out in the schools. But, so then we're kind of going back, and we're defeating the purpose of why we wanted the Christian school. going back and we're defeating the purpose of why we wanted the Christian School. Or do we look at expanding the Christians' school in the North to take on those additional childrens, to leave space for the general ed population in, in the northern schools?
If I could speak at least to that, I think that is one of the advantages of the Christian School, because it is buildable, it's already, I'm not good, I know Rob's here, he can tell me what word I'm using, but it's sighted, ready for a school, that we don't have to start. I think that Moncur, if there's been a change of heart on that, is an opportunity, but I don't know myself whether it's the immediate opportunity because of its immediate cost. I think that the Fredericksburg Christian allows us to, and like I said, that the stars aligned, that we could have that ready and open Moncur so we could deal with the redistricting all at the same time, because I think otherwise, you're going to open Moncur, put kids in there, and then we're going to redistrict everybody again. And I think that will be very, very difficult to do. I mean, not, it's always difficult. But I think that Moncur, if it's back on the table, has a, I think there's a lot that can be thought about what we could, could do there, but I think meeting an immediate need now, I, I think we'll need both in, in the long term to, to minimize this. So it's just sort of my thinking, I mean, this isn't something that we, we've kind of had a chance to, to kick around, but I do, I've always felt that the Fredericksburg Christian timing was really sort of a godsend in a way to help us, as we opened a new school, do a redistricting with that and free up those seats. So I just always thought that it was actually wonderful for once on timing, because normally nothing ever lines up correctly.
Right, okay. Mr. Cohen?
Again, one of the things, and I, I haven't seen it, so if it came, I know I was a little busy today, and I'll divert for a second and thank Ms. Egan. Thank you for your help with Student Government Day and making it successful, so thank you very much. But the question is that, that we had was, we don't know what the growth of pre-K is going to be. And I think that goes back to Ms. Bomke's point of, if you do Fredericksburg Christian School and you're at 20, there's only one room for growth. And then, and I, not, just because that's part of my job, is to restate things. So the idea is that if, if two or three years from now, you have two more classrooms and you're already up at 21, you're going to have to put them back in the other schools, which will decrease enrollment capacity at those schools. So I think that's what, what Ms. Bomke was getting at, was that it's, it's a short-term solution, as, as Ms. Hazard said. So, and I think what, what is sort of driving this now is that if you have Moncur, which is 36 rooms, and you start with 20, and, and the, the whole concept of a $22 million rebuild or renovation of Moncur was based on it being a full-fledged elementary school, but we're not thinking of that. So it may be that short-term fix that Ms. Hazard was talking about, where you don't need $22 million to renovate it, because A, we're not sure if it's going to be a full-fledged elementary school in the future, and B, it may be that you only need to do X or Y for the 20 rooms, that leaves you 16 rooms for growth for either the capacity for an elementary school, if that's what you need, or, and then you, you, you take small amounts to renovate, or you have the room for additional pre-K at, at one facility. So I think that's where it's sort of, especially those of us that went on the tour, were, were thinking, yes, it's a nice plot that you'd build another school at 20, 30, 40 million, but whereas this one, you, it may be that short-term. And I think that's where people are sort of wondering if it is. And you wouldn't have to do the full-fledged renovation of it at this point in time. So that, I think, is, is sort of where people are curious about, again, a laundry list of seeing what was, would it be a renovation of Moncur? Because if it's not needed to do that wing, because there's, if I remember the map correctly, there's about 10 or 12 rooms down that wing, you don't do anything to that wing right now because you're not using that wing, you only worry about the part that you are using. So that, if that gives some context to where this sort of is coming from.
Mr. Cavalier?
And keep in mind that, yeah, this is just an idea about Moncur. You know, you've referred to it as a rumor, but, you know, it's an idea, and I think it's justified looking at. But, and one thing I want to point out, and because parity always comes up, you always got to have the newest school. If you don't have the newest school, your best school, most up-to-date, every, you know, we'd have, if we did that, we'd have to knock down the schools and build a new one every year to keep up. It's not feasible. I haven't had one single person complain to me about the condition of Moncur Elementary School. It is not dilapidated, it is, there is nothing wrong with it. It's old. It's not as old as Ferry Farm, but I don't have people complain to me about it. I don't know about Ms. Decatur, and they're happy they're getting the new school, and maybe Ms. Egan.
I wonder if there's a bunch of nasty grounds.
Well, I, I haven't, so I, um...
What are you communicating with?
That was because you're not in the school.
But, but yet, I, I do talk to people about schools, and so I don't think it's in, so, you know, I know there's special renovations that you're going to have to do for pre-K and for Head Start and all that kind of stuff.
Just a quick question, did you, did you visit Moncur?
Excuse me, I'm not finished. So those are the kind of modifications I'm looking at first and foremost, and then we get into the aesthetics of the situation and all the other, you know, bells and whistles that, that come with elementary schools and converted into these other facilities. But, you know, I, I would hope we could do this for a minimal cost.
All right, Ms., Ms. Chase?
Or Ms. Young?
Ms. Young and Ms. Chase over here.
Okay.
So Jack, have you visited Moncur?
I was at times.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And you've spoken to the principal there about the issues?
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, okay, because we do get...
I don't know how long you've been there.
You don't know that. I've been living here too.
Madam Chairman, let's cut to the chase here. We've got some figures showing how much it would cost to do this, what our capacity is. I think this might be a good time to share that with the school board.
That was my next thing, Mr....
So with an argument back and forth, let's show you what we can do and what we can't do, because it's, the ballgame comes on here shortly, so. Actually, it doesn't, but.
No, we're delighted.
Ms. Bomke, if I could, I just wanted to make sure it's clear, I don't have an objection to looking at Moncur. In fact, it may be that Moncur would be a, a better position for us, because it would give us that room for growth.
Right.
But the first time, thing I heard about it, and I'm not on the committees, was this morning, and I thought, gee, you know, it'd be nice to know this ahead of time so we could be prepared. So that's all.
Well, and so, a lot has come up in a very short period of time, because we were trying to get our assessment done. In the meantime, you all were in the throes of doing your assessment on Fredericksburg Christian School, so that's why we wanted to have this meeting, so we could discuss everything.
The interesting part about this is that all of these numbers for Moncur, if you recall, I believe were going to be presented to us during the CIP presentation that we never received. Just throwing it out there.
You're right, you're right again. I reserve the right to thank my mom.
All right, so at this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Foley.
Madam Chair, just, just briefly, Andrea is going to cover this, I would say that what's been handed out to you, the only document we're going to refer to is the, it's titled as the Summary of Projects. The other information is background that actually came from the school board and school staff, so when, when we received the priority list with the years on it, we simply took those years and those projects and plugged them into the years, and then did what we always do, which is to determine the availability of debt capacity to borrow, and then also what the budget impact would be. So Andrea's going to go over that, that sheet with you. I, I've heard things about rumors tonight, and I guess I just want, want you all to know that when we received this, the county staff felt the obligation to actually run it against the model that we have in place. And so that's all that went on with the Board of Supervisors, and we're glad to be going over that with you all tonight as well.
Please, are you that model?
That's the model that we do with financial planning for the capital improvement program.
So ladies and gentlemen, if you look at the second page of the packet of information that was provided to you, the summary of projects by functional area, this is based on the school board's April 10, 2018 approved top five priorities that you've been talking about today. If we just start from the top and go to the bottom, we can go through this probably fairly quickly. The first project at the top is the courthouse at a phased-in approach of the, the A1, if you will. Going down to the schools' projects, we do have the rebuild of Moncur Elementary, that's the remaining $1 million that we're putting into the newest elementary school. Then there were the improvements to Gary Melchers and the purchase of renovate, and renovation of Fredericksburg Christian School that were, the optimal date for those was fiscal year 2020. We, we chose to put in a renovation of Ferry Farm rather than a rebuild of Ferry Farm, it was just the less costly, and, and that's why we chose that. And then you'll have rebuild of Hartwood Elementary School, Elementary School 18, and High School Number Six. And at the very bottom of the education is the bond funded maintenance repairs and improvements. And across that, it's, it's about $5 million of bond-funded school infrastructure projects every year. If you go down a little bit further to where the revenue sources are, there's county bonds, and that refers to what is necessary for the, for the courts, and then the school bonds to support all the school projects. We did try to project proffers in there that would be available. What you see in fiscal year 2021 of the 163, 631 is for the courthouse. What you see in fiscal year 2024, the $3.6 million would be for the high school. As part of the county's project and planning for the courthouse, we had been ramping up money for the courts, and this disbursement in fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 shows that sort of cash ramp up. I will have you note at the bottom, the assumptions, in fiscal year 2017, this is assumption number two at the bottom, the set-asides and fund balance for major school capital projects was $614,755. Those are not assumed in this calculation, those came from excess meals tax and from debt service savings in the fiscal year 17 budget that have been fenced off in fund balance for the use of major capital projects for the schools. And then item number three, our current set-aside for the courthouse is 708 to 258, also fenced off in fund balance, and that came from debt service savings from the county, from recordation, over budget, and from, there's a $3 fee for all participants who come to the courthouse. So that is what is fenced off currently in fund balance and projected to be used in fiscal year 2020, and is part of that $4.3 million of cash. If you look at the cumulative, so we're kind of, kind of, sorry, I'm coming back to the cumulative deficit, so all the red numbers, in fiscal year 2020, if we attempted to do all of these projects, we would start running out of debt capacity, and of course, as the projects increase and that gets worse through the years. We did attempt to try to put an elementary school and high school seats available at the bottom of this page, based on these projects, to just kind of gauge where we would be in available seats overall. I know that the school staff looks at a very granular level, and they're looking school by school. We didn't take that tech, we looked at overall capacity. You'll also see the debt service on the projects, and you'll see in fiscal year 2020, we have a very large bump that is due mostly to the courthouse. The debt service for the courthouse would start in 2020, but that number continues to escalate throughout the rest of the period. And then we have operating costs for the 10-year period, based on information that we have for the courthouse and the school projects. This is considered to be a phased-in approach, that's what we have listed.
I just, I just, when I look at your cumulative deficits surplus, why does it go down in that way, constantly? I'm just curious.
So as, as it goes down, so availability goes up and down based on our, our financial policies. So we look at assessed value over a 10-year period, and we project that, we look at our 10% of general government expenditures, and we project that. So there's a lot that's happening behind this that makes our availability fluctuate.
I was just curious, it's just increasing kind of in a linear kind of fashion, and then it just kind of goes down by $30 million, so I just was curious why it did that, but I guess it's...
Are you looking at the red number or the black? Okay, so if we look at...
The simple answer is because we add about 35 million to capacity, but we only borrow 7 million.
Right here, we're adding 45 million to capacity, but the only additional borrowers are seven. So we're actually adding capacity.
I'll, I'll ask you. I'm trying to explain it, so it's not getting there.
That's the one you, in the borrowing, does, frees up some space.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about this sheet?
Just have one. Am I reading this correctly, that in fiscal year 2020, there is an availability of funding for 55 million? Or is that, I'm looking at that, the cumulative surplus.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Well, if that's correct, we would certainly be more than willing to move one of our projects up to that year. If that would help.
We got those, we're going to build the next year, those, because of, other than school projects.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure, that there is some funding available.
Right, she's just saying that they're flexible if they...
That's right, our dates are flexible, we can always move forward, right?
Madam Chair, if the, if the projects would move up, then the deficit would also move up.
Right.
And the debt service that is already unaffordable would also go up dramatically, so...
Right. It just creates it even sooner.
Yes.
Right. Okay, Andrea, do you want to go to...
Madam Chair, we didn't intend to cover anything else, I think the rest of it's just materials that you all had.
Yeah, the, attached to the back is the listing of the questions that we sent over that I'm sure all of you saw, and, and then information that, that your response back to our board.
He sent it an email to you guys, and said what the...
Okay.
Ms. Mauer?
So one of the concerns that I had was the projections that were utilized during our CIP process, and then the projections that came out in December, and there was a significant discrepancy between the two. But, but what I don't understand is, in year 2017 and 18, during the CIP process, you had total elementary school projected at 12,630 floor, and then in December, that got moved down to 12,496. So it, it actually was reduced by 200 students, which was good, which was good. But my concern gets is, if you look at the original projections with which we were planning our CIP, it goes up by 80, 95, 109, 112, 27. So these are the students, according to your original projections, that you're adding in, in these out-years, which becomes kind of significant. You added 119 kids, 156 kids, and 123 kids. Also seems reasonable, as the county is growing, we're going to continue to add those kids. But in these new projections where, you know, and, and I just need some methodology understanding on this, is although we went down 200 kids on 17 and 18, or on that first school year, because you're, you're giving us the actual enrollment, so we went down 200 kids between the first set of projections and the second set of projections, you then really tick up the, the out-years. And so instead of 80 kids, you're saying we're going to add 122. Instead of 95 kids, you're saying we're going to add 160. Instead of 109, we're going to add 150. But these out-years are even more poignant, where you say you're going to add 169 kids instead of 119, you're going to add 260 kids instead of 156, and you're going to add 259 kids instead of 123. Why is there, even though we started at 200 less kids, why all of a sudden are we adding, or are we, are the new projections from, from, let's say, September to December, now looking at adding almost double what you had originally projected?
I'm going to ask Dr. Benson to ask staff to answer that question, because I did not personally do those projections.
Okay.
And I wouldn't be able to begin to, to tell you the, the answer, but is, do we have someone here that can respond to that?
I have to respond, but I would just point out, Ms. Mauer, that it's not a few months' time, because what we're looking at is a, another year's worth of predictions in terms, in terms of growth. So it, it looks as though it changed between the time it was originally presented and what, those numbers in December, but that was, that was a year's cycle in looking at projections.
But it's such a statistical deviation, there's got to be some reasoning for that statistical...
But it's such a statistical deviation, there's got to be some reasoning for that statistical deviation. I mean, when you're talking about almost doubling the projections on these years, I mean, there's got to be a substantial reason why. Like something had to happen where you guys said, oh my God, that you were going to double those projections here over here.
Why don't you come over here?
As you know, we involved the county staff in our projection development. And so Jeff Harvey and his personnel, his team is in lockstep with what we do in the projections. So all I can tell you is the same methodology, the cohort progression we used as well as the growth. And the growth methodology model, when we overlay it onto the cohort progression, that's the one that has the biggest volatility because we are changing the data points each year. And so these are a whole new set of numbers. The cohorts are essentially the same except for the new kids coming in and the old kids going out of that K-12 projection. So the cohort analysis, as they travel through, there are some kids that are coming and going in that, and that's built into the model. So the growth overlay onto that, what I call it, the growth model, is the one with the most volatility and it changes. And it's changed on assumptions. And so we go into it and we, we identify assumptions on certain developments that we think are going to occur, some that have occurred. The build-out of certain developments are changing. We've got better data, better fidelity. We brought in Matt Townsend to help us work with our contractor this time. So his oversight of that, our oversight was even better. And we are able to identify potential errors that were, that were embedded in the previous model. And as Dr. Benson said, this was not just a month change. It was, it was a 12, 13-month difference in that.
And while I agree with that, and I agree with what you're saying, because when you guys did a re-analysis, and I don't know if you remember, but man, I was supportive of the school board. From what I understand, you literally called those subdivisions and said, what are you doing? When are you going to build? And so those numbers that came out in that May timeframe were really a good set of numbers. However, you've got a statistical deviation of almost 50%. There's got to be something that significantly changed to have a statistical deviation of such magnitude.
Well, I.
Or, or I'm going to question your model. If you can't say that this is the reason we have such a significant statistical deviation, then, then you need to go, because that jumps out at me. And it's something that I've kind of been asking the question, but finally I got the two sets of numbers side by side and I'm looking at it. And that gives me considerable pause, especially when I've got Miss Hazard over here going, we're going to be at 105% capacity in 2025. But that 105% capacity in 2025 also includes a massive statistical deviation. And that's the answer I'm looking for.
I don't think I would characterize it as a massive.
50% is a significant statistical deviation.
But I will tell you, I, I would just offer that the data that we go into this, a big chunk of it is constantly changing. Okay, and so we're refining it. And I think our process improves every year.
Right.
So I'm not going to tell you that there are some areas that we might have been able to improve the previous year that we were able to capture this year. And the assumptions, some of the assumptions that we've made are better. They're better. And some of the data that we've gotten from the developers is better. Now, did we do the same thing? Yes, we went to the contract, I mean, the developers, and we tried to facilitate. And they're going to tell us what they want to tell us, right? We can go off of past data. So I could certainly go back and look at the model. But the model, it was questioned about four years ago, the model that we used.
Right, and you guys did a considerable amount of work, and I applaud you for the work in looking at the model and changing the model.
I'm very confident, I'm very confident in the model and the way we do this. Now, is it getting better? Yes, and I think next year it will be better. But our track record, in my opinion, has been fairly good as an aggregate. Now, we do have some areas from school to school that we missed it, and we'll be the first to say we missed it.
And I'm looking at overarching elementary school numbers. So I guess my, my, my number one question is, is when you see such a significant statistical deviation such as this, from one set of numbers to another set of numbers, and in my mind, they're presented to me in September and they're presented to me in, in December. So in my mind, that's how they're being presented to me, and we had this conversation. But when you see such a dramatic difference, you guys don't scratch your head and go, wow, this looks weird, and try to figure out why? Or you just say, it's because of the model.
No, I think we can, we can dig down and peel the onion back.
But you haven't.
No, we have that, but it's very complex. I don't, and I'm not going to pretend to tell you that I know every exponential. You know, pass through. But it's very complex. And I can go back and I can attempt to give you some explanation of why each year is different. But I think each, if you focus on one year, you'll get the answer across the 10-year window.
But I'm looking at a trend here.
I do. I agree, I understand.
And I'm looking at both sets of your numbers.
And I could certainly, I'll be happy to do that.
And we're talking about, and I, I understand where you're coming from. I just caution you that if you're going to present two drastically different sets of numbers that have a statistical variation that these, that these do. And we're, I mean, it's, it's not like we're, we're talking about, you know, districting five to 10 kids in Hartwood Elementary School or districting, you know, we're talking about $165 million decision that we're making. And when there's a statistical deviation such as this, we need to know why before it's even presented.
Fair enough.
Well, and I think, just let me say, I, I think what's kind of ringing in my ears right now was what happened when the decision was made to build Shirley Heim.
Yes.
And when we opened the school, it was half full. And I remember I was an active parent at that point in time. So I think Ms. Mauer brings up a very good point and that we need to allow the school board to go back and do their research and come back and validate what, what has transpired in your model to.
Yes, ma'am.
Tell us the story.
And I think we all do know what happened in 2008. The economy slowed down significantly and that was on, I don't think that was, the projection model didn't address that. And so I think that's what caught us there.
And I think you had a very different projection model back then. And I, I'm not accusing you.
No, ma'am, not at all.
I believe there was somebody else that was in charge of that.
It's still, no, it's still there, but we'll certainly do that.
Mrs. Bomke, if I may, from a historical perspective, when we came to the Board of Supervisors, and this is many, many supervisors ago who were lining the chambers in their pictures, the school board presented a, an option that we could build one middle school in the center of the county, somewhere in the courthouse road quarter, or we could build a middle school in the north and the south. We made it very clear that we only needed one middle school. But the Board of Supervisors at that time had the foresight to allow us to build two middle schools. We built Dixon Smith in the south and we built Shirley Heim in the north. And by that decision of that Board of Supervisors, and I can't count how many years ago, I don't know if you were here, you may have been, Jack. It was, I remember Pete Fields and Bob Gibbons and, I mean, this is like history. But by that foresight, and I was shocked that they said, build the two schools because we made it clear, we had PowerPoints or whatever up there. And the supervisor said, go ahead and build those two schools. And that foresight puts us in a position where you don't see one middle school on those projected needs. So, you know, you see elementary schools and you see a high school. When, when we, when we opened them, we knew we didn't need to, but it was to provide for the future. And now, fortunately, we're not asking you, you know, to build a middle school because we still have capacity. So that wasn't a poor planning issue. That was an affirmative decision on the Board of Supervisors to look forward and build a school in the north and the south rather than just one in the middle, the county.
Yes.
So I, I was involved about years ago, back in 2008, when they were making that decision to build that middle school. And, and one of the things that bothered me, and actually I looked at the year-over-year projections and I have the same questions that I do now. And, and so, but the problem that was in 2008 was that they had one set of projections for redistricting, they had one set of projections for budgeting, and they had one set of projections for justifying the new school. And, and I, believe it or not, I still have all of those pieces of paper. I think I showed them to Ms. Bomke the other day, it scared her. And, but, but here's what you lost by, by having an under-capacity school for, for all of that time. For every million dollars that we take on in debt, we give up a teacher. So the amount of money that it takes for us to repay that debt is roughly the same amount for a teacher. And that's when, you know, wherever you sit on Stafford High School and the rebuild of Stafford High School, what it did, what we did give up as a community when we rebuilt Stafford High School and we took on $70 million in debt, is we gave up 70 teachers, not for one year, but for 30 years. And that's why, you know, oh my God, if we, if we build these schools and we have this foresight, but yes, that debt repayment, there's an opportunity cost to that debt repayment. And that's also what we're kind of looking at. So when we look at, you know, whether or not we can afford, not just in the debt capacity model, all of this construction, but also whether or not we want to give up all of those teachers or all of those firefighters or all of those police officers, the amount of money that we're utilizing to pay back that debt could be utilized from operational. People call this two pots of money. It is not two pots of money because we do have to pay back that money. It is not manna from heaven. And that payback amount for every million dollars we take on in debt is one teacher for 30 years. And that's where my concern is, is that it's not, it's not, because I've seen on Facebook, oh, it's two pots of money, but the debt repayment comes out of operational.
Ms. Hazard.
If I would just say also, I mean, I'm glad that we are talking to the developers, but I have to tell you, Mr. Cohen has sat where I have sat on the planning commission. And what do they always say? I'm building out in two to three years. So when they call, they're building two to three years. I will tell you, having sat on the planning commission, ones that I approved a long time ago or did, or even didn't approve, are now building out now. So I think there's something that the developers also are telling you their best story, if they want to, that, that they are building. So I just think we, we are trying to do the best, but it also is based on the information we get. And most of the builders trying to stay true to what they were told to you all and the planning commission and everybody else, we're building right away. I have a whole bunch of lists. I know Mr. Snelling does two of ones that were building right away and didn't, but now they've all started building. So we're also in catch-up mode of a lot of things that were stopped or slowed down from the 2008, 2009, and now we're getting them. So we're also playing catch-up in some that have been sitting for a while, too. I think we've got kind of both things going on.
Yes, Ms. Decatur.
I'd just like to briefly add that while I'm interested in understanding the, the reason for the difference in the numbers, and I appreciate you looking at them because I know that that helps us grow and, you know, and evolve and do things better. But I would also suggest that sometimes, including right now, our numbers work the opposite way. So, you know, the projections, I, I've got more students in wide water in both of my elementary schools than were projected. And additionally, I would suggest that a difference of 80 to 100 students doesn't negate the need for a school. So, so that was.
This is 100 students year-over-year, though. It's, so it's the cumulative effect on the changes in the numbers.
But I would just like to, for the record, that it also works the other way.
Yeah.
So, so do you all go back and look at your modeling? And maybe this is a question for Mr. Haran. After you've, year after year, and go back and look at where were we right, where were we wrong? Do you go back and analyze and then you show that to the school board?
We have not formally located some school board.
But you have.
Informal, we have. We've showed them past projections and obviously, but we haven't done a detailed analysis as to why. Because they do, we do them annually. So decisions that are made in a 10-year window can certainly be adjusted as we look at them each and refine it each year. Again, it's, it's the data. I think the method, the models and the methodology is very sound. It's not something that we invented. It's something that's almost industrial, industry standards out there for projection analysis. And it's the growth piece that has the most volatility here and as we overlay it, in my opinion.
All right, well, maybe that's something you all can talk about or whoever's on the joint committee. Maybe that's a conversation each year. Okay. You have anything else to add, Mr. Foley?
Madam Chair, I would just say that I guess the one decision that will need to be made as a part of completing the budget is whether or not to proceed with Fredericksburg Christian School. So.
Right.
We would at least carry that decision to your final budget work session, unless there's some, some decision to be made now. I think that we would say that the, the timing of the high school, there seems to be pretty much agreement about when that's needed in order to avoid getting to some 300 seats over capacity. And under that scenario, I believe it needs to start in 2021. So that impact and then the court impact are the two big challenges that you have, but there still needs to be some resolution about dealing with the elementary capacity. If it's not Fredericksburg Christian, then the analysis on Mont Cure as a possible solution would need to be done. And I know the Ferry Farm issue is still out there. So we would bring that back to the board's final couple of work sessions on the first and second. I think there'll need to be some direction about whether to purchase Fredericksburg Christian or not.
Could you all discuss with us what your thoughts are and what kind of discussions you've had regarding redistricting as it relates to Fredericksburg Christian School and if it is not purchased?
I think that was one of the questions we responded to, did we not? I'm going to look at my response to make sure I'm consistent. Know what question number that was? Number two, oh, first page, all right. "The school board is considering an elementary school redistricting effort that would go into effect for the 2019, 2020 school year. The scope of the redistricting is dependent on a wide variety of factors, including the decision regarding the proposed purchasing of Fredericksburg Christian School. As with all redistricting, this process would involve significant input from community stakeholders." We have not formally had a discussion on redistricting. But we have talked about the potential impact if we were able to acquire the Fredericksburg Christian School because that would basically free up classrooms, both in the elementary schools in the north whose preschool classes would be transferred over to the Fredericksburg Christian School, as well as classrooms in the southern end of the county because by moving those 10 head start classrooms out of Melcher's complex, we would be making room in the Melcher's complex for the preschools, for a southern preschool consolidation. So that would basically free up 20 classrooms for us, which is the equivalent of, you know, a little less than 500 students. If we were to have 500 seats spread throughout the county, it would be my recommendation to the board to look at a county-wide redistricting. We have never been in a position to do that in the past because we've never had, you know, the, the capacity all over. Right now, we have pockets of preschools. And it was schools that had room. Oh, we have room, we'll put a preschool here. Next year, we're going to, we've told we need two more rooms for preschools. I'm not sure where they're going to go, but we'll have to find somewhere where there's some room and move it. Now, that, that may change. The preschools, you know, are more mobile than some of the other classes because the students aren't with us. You know, like in the classes where we have them K through five, the preschools are, you know, with us for maybe one or two years. And then they would, you know, move up to, to something else. Maybe, maybe they would be, how long would they be with us for a maximum preschools?
We have some at the age of two.
Two, so we may have, you know, some for more than that. But, but they are, you know, more movable. Most parents do not want their children moved. When we look at special ed, that's particularly difficult to, to move special ed students, you know, from one school to another, and we try not to do that. But we will, we will need to have that discussion as a board when we know what is going to be made available.
Okay. Yes.
It's a quick question. Two-year-olds in preschool, is that a state mandate?
Yes.
For all two-year-olds?
Unfunded, state mandate.
Special ed?
Unfunded.
Okay, and how many students do we have at that level?
How many do we have? Now, we have a chart. They're not all two-year-olds, but they're two, three, and fours. Where's that chart we have?
240 kids are in pre-hey, according to this chart.
Yeah, 240.
Okay, I'm, I'm told there's six classrooms with two-year-olds. Now, remember, these classrooms have four of this, I'll call them special education students. And then we have four, you know, peer models in those classrooms.
And that's eight students?
So we have six times, now, there's six classrooms, is that morning, AM, PM? AM, PM, so that's eight per classroom, so 48 would be the number of two-year-olds.
Countywide?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but the preschool also includes three-year-olds and four-year-olds, right?
The, the two-year-olds are handled, handled differently, though. We don't, we don't have, use a peer model. We don't, we don't use a peer model for the two-year-olds. Okay? But we have six, six classrooms with two-year-olds in it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more questions about the CIP from our board, or your board? Calling once, okay. All right. I think we've discussed that enough. So we did, if we have time, 7:13, we wanted to talk a little bit about your budget and a few budget priorities. So does any, do any of my colleagues want to start this conversation, or do you want me to? Yes.
Just to make, I'm getting a lot of emails from folks saying, "Please raise taxes to 99 cents so that we can, you can fully fund the school budget." I just want to make sure that everyone understands that 99 cents will not fully fund the school budget. It would take $1.05 to fully fund the school budget. So just want to put that out there, so everybody understands it, that 99 cents will not fully fund your budget.
99.5? No, I'm saying you could go up to 99.5.
No, we can't go up, once we've advertised. Yeah. Okay. Any? Okay. So I just had a couple of questions. On page nine of your budget, I just wanted to go back to this. You're requesting an across-the-board 2.5% salary increase for all employees, correct?
Cola.
Yep, cola, for 5.2 million. And then, I guess for me, I need to differentiate between the market-based scale enhancement, that's for teachers, and then you've got your service scale enhancement, and that is specifically for who?
Paras, bus drivers.
Paraprofessionals.
Okay, that's all the paras, bus drivers.
Bus drivers and monitors.
Okay. And then down below, you have paraprofessionals added. So in addition to that, we're looking for another 35.5 paras, correct? Okay. So I'm gonna ask, so we heard today that Spotsylvania County is talking about a 4% increase. We don't know where they're getting that money.
Yeah.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, the 4% increase, there's, the big difference is the gap. The gap between the school board budget and what's, the county administrator in Spotsylvania proposed was only $2 million. The gap here is $13.4 million. That's your difference. They can make, they can make it work with a 3 cent tax increase. We can't make it work with a 3 cent tax increase. That's, that's the issue.
So can you all educate me, and maybe some of my colleagues already know the answer to this, where you made decreases in your budget? Where were there places where you felt that, areas where you could make cuts? Can you share that with me?
Wait, you've been on that a long time.
Sure. Sure. For this budget, as I discussed during the briefing to you all, we primarily took the superintendent's budget and used his requirements-based guidance to us about what's needed in the school division. And, you know, and as I mentioned earlier as well, you know, this is a typical model across business. You know, you go out, you get your requirements from special education, for grants, for growth, and for pay raises, for market-based adjustments, and you put that down to your funding body. And that's what we did. I believe we cut about $680,000 worth of, with, yeah, 600...
Teachers.
Well, we cut, well, we cut a variety of things. We initially didn't support the 20 new teachers for the growth, because I said, "Well, how do you base that? What's the metric you're gonna use to say? If you're saying we have 383 students at 24 a class, you know, we have to have some metric to say, hey, here's the growth we needed, and 16 was about the number." So we decreased four on the growth for that. And then we decreased a variety of other things, but it wasn't, it wasn't a significant decrease this year, as we usually, we have done in the past.
Chris, I also, we also gave some thought in the question, too, I believe, you've been talking this earlier, but that we adopted and did this hearing, and perhaps Mr. McOssker too, some of the deductions and savings that were not registered, and maybe not...
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Chris.
Just to clarify, Ms. Bommack, are you referring to from last year's budget to this year's budget, or from the superintendent's proposed?
Correct. No, from last year's budget to this year's budget.
Sure. So there were several areas. A lot of it was salary lapse and attrition. So, you know, as we, as new teachers come in, there's always a change. We have retirees. So just in salary comp and benefits, including the VRS rate decrease, there was about a little over $3 million in savings there that were reinvested into the budget. Additionally, as far as from the superintendent's budget to the school board budget, as Mr. McCosker was alluding to, we cut four growth positions that the school board did not feel comfortable bringing 20 growth teachers for general education forward to you guys. There's a detailed listing that's on our website, that our board has looked at in detail under the budget, and it's actually, it's the document I think you're looking at right now, I think it's the last page of that, which details all of our non-comp benefit increases and decreases that are in the budget. With being zero-based, it's real hard. We have to take a very detailed look, to look at and say, "Hey, this detail line is not in the budget this year, but we've added this line." So I took all of those detailed lines of decreases and increases, and dropped them on this last page of this budget summary, for our board, and obviously for you guys to reference as well. And there was another, I'd have to add them up, it's about a million and a half dollars of cuts from, what, things that were in last year's budget that are not in last year's budget, or in this year's budget, but obviously, there were other areas that we said, "Hey, we don't, we don't need to pave, or, you know, name the, name the item, but we do need to do this this year." So there is detail behind every benefit, or every budget line.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'm a little confused. At our last work session, Mr. McCosker, you indicated that the school board had actually increased the superintendent's budget. My question is, so you didn't do any decreases. If you increased his budget, you took his budget and put more on it. So my question is, how much more did you add to the superintendent's budget?
So the net increase was $694,000.
Which was for security.
500 was the capital, was the, was the capital outlay for security, 500,000. And then, yeah, so...
So you actually didn't decrease anything. You may have shifted stuff around, but you didn't decrease the budget, correct?
Well, there was increases and decreases.
But you shifted stuff, but you still got a...
Eventually, it panned out to 600 and, the 500,000 plus.
But that's your increase over his budget. So how much was the total increase from FY '18 to FY '19?
That's...
Is that 16 million?
Yeah. It was 17,400,000.
Thank you.
Ms. Mauer?
Okay. So back when you presented, did the budget presentation before the Board of Supervisors, one of the things that struck me was the 86.5 new positions that you were talking about, which came out to roughly, for every child that we added, 383 children, we were adding, or for every 4.33 children, we were adding to the school division, we were adding one new position, which, you know, really, really struck me as, again, a statistical anomaly. And so I specifically asked on this compliance of 53 positions that you had indicated for the amount of 2.4 million, and you had told me, "These are unfunded state mandates, the state requires this." And even Ms. Decatur over there, you know, was very emphatic, says, "If we don't do this compliance stuff, how in the world are we supposed to give teachers raises?" And so I asked, very specifically, "I want the statute, I want to know where we are, and I want to know, you know, what that deviation is that we're adding to justify this compliance." And when I got that spreadsheet, it actually, on average, there were a lot of different, you know, compliance things in there, but on average, we're like four times greater than what the state requires. And so when you, when you come before me and say, "This is a state mandate," and I actually read the law, and I read where we are, and I read what we're doing, it really isn't a state mandate. And what concerns me is when I get information that may not be necessarily accurate, it concerns me. And the reason it concerns me is I sit on the Legislative Committee for Stafford County, and we have come to the school division because I believe very strongly in shared services, I believe very strongly in, you know, in supporting the school division, and I believe very strongly in fighting unfunded mandates. And twice this year, I've gone to the state, and they says, "You know what? You're not really reading the state mandates correctly, and quite frankly, you're wrong." One of them was, was the day school. And so the state actually, because of Stafford County, the state went out and did a report, and Stafford County is paying significantly more than everywhere else. This was in the state report. So I kind of had egg on my face. And then when you come to me and you say, "This is a state mandate, and we can't pay for teachers because of this state mandate," and I find out that the state mandate, we're doing four times on average, four times more than the state requires, then this is not a compliance issue, this is a choice issue. And we need to make choices here in Stafford County. And teacher pay is an important choice for me. And special education is important, but when we're four times above the state mandate, then, then maybe we need to look at making some other choices. So, so can you explain that to me?
Well, I will tell you that the slide that I provided the board, and the board agreed on, was with staff's input, and they assured us that these were compliance issues. So if this, if you indeed are saying that this is incorrect, I am going to turn this over to Dr. Benson and his staff, and to explain to all of us why these numbers aren't correct, if indeed that's the truth.
And before you close out, this can respond to you.
Yes.
I would just like to add that nurses are not a state mandate, but we can't run a school without nurses. So many of...
But your nurses aren't on your compliance slide. This is 2.4 million that says compliance.
So I guess we'll talk about whether or not those numbers are accurate, as you're suggesting they're not.
Right.
But there are several things that, so when you say, you know, the choice issue...
It's a choice.
So, so are you suggesting that we run a school without nurses?
No. Number one, I'm not talking about nurses, I'm talking about compliance of the 53 positions. Number one, let's, let's do apples and oranges. And number two, what I'm saying is, is that when you stand before this Board of Supervisors, and you ask the Board of Supervisors to go down to the state, because I will fight, I will fight to the death on unfunded state mandates. And I have gone and fought to the death on unfunded state mandates, but when they tell me that you're wrong, and that these really aren't unfunded state mandates, I am depending upon you to give me accurate information. I am hoping that you're giving, and this, this line here, it says compliance, and because, because I had a tough time from a statistical perspective of pressing that "I believe" button, I said, "Give me the statute."
So before I move to the turnover with my staff, I would ask, which, which line of the...
It's especially the 40.5 special education. You guys were actually provided this, this spreadsheet long ago.
You should speak to that.
Yeah. I mean, you should speak to it, because you were provided the spreadsheet, as were you on these special education positions. This was, this was a document that was presented.
Ms. Chase?
Yeah, I've been trying to tease some of this part myself. The one that jumps out most is paras for autism classes. And so the state mandate is one para, one teacher, eight autistic children. Now, if you go into an autistic classroom with eight autistic students, and you see one para and one teacher, and then you see one student have a meltdown, you now have seven children without supervision, and one child with two, a para and a teacher handling them. So I, I understand what you're saying. I also think you have to be a little careful when you look at what other divisions tell you they're doing, because if a student has an IEP that requires them to have a dedicated para, then we have to provide that dedicated para. And the state mandate doesn't show that we also have to add that dedicated para. So there are mandates, and then there are other things. But yes, I'm still looking, I'm still trying to figure it out.
And what I am saying is, is not whether or not it's, it's necessary, what's going on in the classroom. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, you provided me with a slide that said it's required by the state, you provide me the backup documentation, and the backup documentation does not support this statement.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, Ms. Mauer. I'll totally agree with you. And once again, the slide that was provided to me, and the board, was compliance, yes, no, with 86.5 positions, and we even discussed compliance, state compliance versus must-do. Because I believe in true, in transparency, right? You give me the state mandate, if it's one for one, then we say, Board of Supervisors, our funding body, it's one-to-one, however, comma.
This is what we should do.
This is what, and that is what I asked for, and if, and if that is not what is represented here, then I'm, once again, going to turn it over to Dr. Benson and the staff.
So thank you, Mr. McCosker. So there was a...
You're the boss, and you're welcome.
So there was...
Actually, Mr. McCosker, you're the boss.
We're the boss. We're the boss.
So that, that information was shared, I believe, with both boards, about where the discrepancies were with state standards and the adopted standards that the school board has. And there is a difference for the paraprofessionals, for the autism staffing, but that, that's the only place where there's a difference. So I'm not sure what other standards we're speaking to, Ms. Mauer.
Well, and this is the one, because it's a $2.4 million hit. And Mr. McCosker, and I can replay the tape, said, "This is required by the state." And Ms. Decatur later on in our seven-on-seven said, "If we can't fund what's required by the state, then how in the world are we gonna be able to make choices on anything else?" And so that's where I get into the concern. So if, if your leadership is gonna tell me this is required by the state, I expect it to be required by the state. But this gets back into, when you look at statistical anomalies, something should itch you right back here and go...
Ms. Mauer, what constitutes a statistical anomaly?
When you're adding, for every student, when you're adding for every student, for, or for every 4.33 students, one, one individual.
What are we taking into consideration about the needs of the students?
And, but you told me, and that's the difference. You didn't tell me.
It is.
Mr. McCosker told me, that a should is different than a must. And all I am asking is that, in transparency, provide us accurate information.
I appreciate that, Ms. Mauer. The, the needs of some of our students are greater than what an average student might be. And so the level of staffing that we're gonna provide to support them is gonna be different, whether they're students that require special education services, or English language learners, or students that are economically disadvantaged and have a different support structure for them, okay?
And while I appreciate that, Dr. Benson, I also appreciate the fact, the needs of the students is to have teachers here in Stafford County. And we can't afford a $17 million budget increase, so we have to make choices.
Absolutely.
And sometimes we have to make choices to keep the actual teachers here, you know, by choosing for pay increases, instead of a four times above state standard on, on staffing.
And Ms. Mauer...
And that's, that is all I'm saying, is that we have to make choices, and I just want accurate information if choices are going to be made.
I appreciate that. And Ms. Mauer, the positions that we're talking about are paraprofessional positions, they're among the lowest-paid folks in our organization, out of market considerably. So that in and of itself, right, those paraprofessionals, those additional paraprofessionals are not gonna prevent us from getting raises to folks.
It's a $2.4 million hit.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Benson. Mr. Cavalier?
So I only have two things, and I don't really understand statistics that well, I'm an engineer. So, you know, that'll, I'm gonna dumb it down a little bit here, okay? And make it easier for everybody. First of all, I fully support the 2.5% cola. In fact, I wish it were more, to tell you the truth. And that, that part, I hope we can achieve, barring everything else that we're talking about today. And if you'd like, we'd be happy to send that over in categorical funding. Now, I know you all don't like that, but if that's what needs to be... Now, I know you all don't like that, but if that's what needs to be done, that needs to be done. They don't like that? No. But the other thing, and this, and I bear full responsibility for coming over and speaking to you all about public safety. And I know that created quite a firestorm. And, but we discussed at the Public Safety Committee meeting the other day, and then did your guy brief you on that, Dr. Benson, the results of that meeting from Tuesday?
I have not been briefed on the last meeting.
Okay. I'll go ahead and do it then. The sheriff, the sheriff is the head of the School Security Task Force. So, he's going to be the one that I rely on the most, with his input from all his collection of people, your security people, our security people, experts, not us, okay? I'm not going to listen to what the school board says, or what the Board of Supervisor says, as much as I'm going to listen to what the Security Task Force says. Because the raises, that's a big issue fiscally. That's our biggest part of the budget for you. This is not that big, but it's very, very important. So, while it has a small number associated with it, it's an idea whose time has come. And I want to run this by you tonight, and you don't have to answer me tonight, but think about it, because we can't, you know, we're not going to fully implement your resolution for all SROs next year. It's just non-achievable, according to the sheriff, because of training and hiring time and all that kind of good stuff. So, what we talked about in the Public Safety Committee meeting was hiring retired law enforcement officers to be essentially the SROs in the elementary schools, starting off with a pilot program initially. They're doing this in Prince William County. And it wouldn't be a big cost, but we'll try it for a year, see if it works. I think, you know, one, it's a great insurance program to have. You've got these older people mixing in with the younger kids. I think that's a good thing. And so, I just need to understand what you all think about this, because this is going to be a decision that we all have to make. Because we could do that. I think that's achievable in next year's budget. And you all included, at the end, after I made my speech to you all, some extra money. We haven't included any extra money in our budget for the SROs yet. So, would this be something that's acceptable to you all?
I have a question about that.
Let's see again.
If Prince William County is going to do a pilot program, why aren't we just waiting to see how theirs pans out before we go spending money on that kind of thing?
Do you want to wait another year? That's what that would do.
I'm just one of seven, so that's just a question.
No, go ahead, Cal.
I mean, just for me, this is kind of the first that I've sort of heard. I'd like to get a little bit more. I read something very quick, but I always hate getting the Reader's Digest version, because many times, the devil is in the details of how it's implemented. I mean, for me, I would like more information, but anything that you all can provide, I mean, it sounds like an opportunity. But I can say, sitting here tonight, I love information, so I'd like to just read more about it and how it worked, but that's just sort of where I would be.
If you could share some information with us with respect to the proposed duties of this retired law enforcement officer, and how it prepares-
I don't have any of this information.
Okay, well, maybe we could get it-
This is the sheriff. The sheriff is going to make the real decisions on this. We're going to take what he gives us and implement it, hopefully. But what I, all I wanted to do was throw it out there to you tonight and see if you thought it was even feasible. So, that's my only point tonight.
Just real, just open-
I just want to say, I'm not sure we can even give a response without knowing what this proposed person would be doing as compared to the SRO, what, how the sheriff, if the sheriff recommends it, I personally, you know, would support something, because I have full confidence in our sheriff, and I'm very grateful for the task force. But without any additional information, I don't see how we could even begin to comment. I mean, we don't even know what duties these people would have, what their hours would be, you know, how they would compare to, you know, an SRO.
All right. I withdraw the question.
Mr. McOscar.
So, just kind of at the enterprise level, at the 10,000-foot level, I mean, that sounds, if the sheriff, you know, agrees, this is just my take. I think the more important issue I'd have with Mr. Foley and the board, you know, if I were a Board of Supervisor member, is would I, you know, how much would it cost? And then, would I use the tax rate increase for that cost? And what you can do is, you can, you know, you can justify, and well-justify to the public, you know, a tax rate increase based on, for the security of the schools. And use that money, get it into your budget, into your base budget, and then, as the folks get onboarded, we can use, you know, you just use that money until they fully get onboarded. But getting it into the base budget is the hard, you know, for me, would be the, because you don't want to drag it out to another year and say, "Okay, now we're going to raise, you know, the next budget cycle." As a Board of Supervisor member, you probably don't want to say, "I'm going to raise taxes now to hire the SROs," you know? So, I just think the time is right now to kind of think about that as a board, and, you know, and then implement something. Yep?
All right. Dr. Benson, did you have something?
Well, I would just add, we certainly would like to hear more information from the sheriff. But I also understand that retired officers who remain in good standing are permitted to carry weapons on campus. And, you know, the thing that we're trying to guard against is an active shooter. That's kind of what we need, so.
According to the sheriff, these would be all people still who have all their certifications with what they need to have. They would function exactly like an SRO does now.
And then, ma'am sheriff-
But not be a paid deputy.
I don't know if anything else will get thrown my way here later. And this might be the last time where I have all of our elected officials in one space with the time that I have left in the community. I do want to just echo, reinforce something that Mr. Cohen said earlier about the need to renovate library spaces in the division. When you look at an older school, the one place that you can go to have a really positive impact on every child in that facility is in that library, and making it a 21st century space, a learning commons. We've managed to get about a third of our libraries in the division done. That would be a great place for us to move forward in future years. So, I just want to support that. Mr. Cohen.
All right. Mr. Cohen, I think you were next.
Okay. Well, then, I'll say thank you. And so, again, sort of in the mindset of restating, when we met before, Ms. Shelton asked a question about priorities, and it didn't seem to connect what I think she was getting at. So, I'll try to reword it, and if I'm wrong, she will certainly elbow me. But if we were to go, if we, if your budget, as it came over, was going to get fully funded, that was at $1.05, it's not going to be $1.05, because we didn't advertise at $1.05. So, you're looking at a floor of a budget that's at 96.5, and then maybe higher. So, I think what Ms. Shelton was trying to get is, to you, and it could go to every one of you, since I don't think you, as a board, had decided, but what are your priorities as of, if it were only, I always keep saying 86.5, and people hit me. 96.5, what is like the seller? And then, if we were to go higher, what is it that you would add to it? And I think that's where, and I may be wrong, but is that what you were sort of, the feeling by the board is, we purposely said and advertised a higher tax rate until we heard what you wanted, out of respect for you. And we want to hear sort of where your priorities are. And, you know, is it, the COLA is never going to be touched but X, you know, some type of guidance that if we were to go higher, this is what you were looking at. And if it were, and I'm not saying that you're going to say, "Yay, go for the 96.5," but I think people would like to know, what's the, what is the base, and where do you go higher?
If I may? When we first started talking about possibly making cuts, laying in bed at 2:00 in the morning, thinking about it, what I flushed out in my own mind was that COLAs and market adjustments were the number-one priority for me. I can't speak for the rest of the board. And if that means having to cut growth positions, then that's something that I'm willing to do. I don't know about everybody else. I'm not speaking for you. You asked my opinion, I just gave it to you.
Thank you. Ms. Young.
I just wanted to go back to the officers. I think it's a great idea. I just want to make sure, though, that, is this a shared service, or is it the budget going to be, is it part of the supervisory budget? Just the thought process of back when, in today's climate, it's a very dangerous thing with guns in the school system.
Ms. Mauer.
Just really quickly, one of the things that Spotsylvania did was they did 4% to their teachers, and then the 2% to their admin. We're doing 2% to our admin. I was wondering if we could get a breakout of what that COLA would be, if we just did a raise, because the teachers right now, the paraprofessionals, the bus drivers, those that are face-to-face with our students are a priority. And I'm certain I'm seeing a lot of head nodding here. And so, if we could get a breakout of what that cost differential would be, if you just did the 2.5% raise, and took out the admin, and did a 2% raise for your admin, if you could give us that cost differential, that's what Spotsylvania did. And it's something worthy looking at, and would kind of give us a little bit of a frame of reference.
Have you all considered-
Two and a half to teacher, I'm sorry. I just want to confirm that we get this right information. Are you seeing anybody other than the administrators would be to, okay, because you've mentioned teachers. I just want to make sure.
In my mind, a lot of your administrators are kind of six-figure jobs, especially, and 2% to somebody who's making $100,000, and 2% to somebody who's making $48,000, or even worse than that, $13,000 for some of your positions.
Yes, for the paras.
Significant difference.
No, I just want to make sure we have the right questions, so we can give you the answers.
However, comma, however, and I want to be very clear on that, when you take out the admin, please don't take out the admin that are in your schools.
Admin assistants.
Your assistants. So, those that are face-to-face with the children are the ones that I'm looking for. I don't want you to lump in those school administrators in, okay, just staying clear.
So, you asked about priorities, and I'm in agreement with Ms. Egan about teacher salaries. Another thing that's a big priority for me is trying to get our paras closer to the median of the market. When I went and visited and talked to paras who were getting multiple concussions in a semester because of working with students, and they're on cognitive leave, they're not getting paid enough. So, that's another priority for me.
I think to answer that question, and a couple other things that I'd like to speak to, is when I quoted that number, I quoted a very specific number that's on the front page of our budget book. And that number is compliance, okay? And I realize you've done some digging, but that number is compliance. And then, as I understand it, and please don't, you know, put this in stone, but as I understand it, I'm not a mathematician, but after I said that that night, I went back and I ran some numbers of my own, because I wanted to make sure that I wouldn't be misquoted. But what I did is, I looked at Mr. Foley's recommendation to you all for funding. And what I believe I see is our compliance plus our 2.5% COLA. So, the reason why I bring up things like nurses and all of that is because if you were to approve Mr. Foley's recommendation of what his number is, it would certainly fund our compliance, and it would certainly fund our 2.5%. What it wouldn't fund are things, okay, don't quote me, or hold me to this, but what it wouldn't fund are things like nurses, whereas they're not compliance, but they're really needs. And these, and I'm not talking about nice-to-haves, like, you know, like we added somebody to do our furniture inventory. I'm not talking about nice-to-haves. I'm talking about needs and growth, and maintaining classroom sizes and things like that. And I know you understand that. But that's why I brought that out, because I saw the recommendation, and again, I think that's what I'm seeing. I think I'm seeing compliance plus 2.5%, and that's it. So, that's that. And I did, at the end of our last budget season, because I was so new on the board, I didn't sleep after I approved that budget. I felt terrible that we could not, that we chose to do other things instead of giving that 2.5%. And that's something I won't do again. Anyhow, so as far as my priorities are concerned, the 2.5, I wouldn't want to touch that.
Well, and didn't, a couple years ago, if I remember, we've been bringing the nurses up. Haven't we addressed the nurses position? Yes. They're at the median. Right, right, right. I just wanted to verify, I remember that we addressed the nurses. Okay.
Did you want, did you want everybody to just comment, Mr. Cohen, or no? If we're out of time, I'm fine. I can, it's up to you all. I don't know what the-
Is it okay? We only have three more board members, the school board members to give their take. So, personally, I think it'd be good for everyone to hear. Thank you.
I mean, from my perspective, I think that the committees last year are, that we do write our budget priorities every year. They are put forth. We write them out. It's not a surprise when we get the budget. This budget, three-quarters, if not more, is focused on compensation and increasing the compensation to our employees, because, under Dr. Benson's leadership, since he's been here, he has made us move to and look at market-based. And I know a lot of people struggle with that, but it is market-based. I know Dr. Benson worked with Mr. Foley's prior person of that seat, to work on market-based for you all. You all have been studying that for years, in the last couple of years as well.
And we still are.
And still are. And so are we. And so, I think that that is something that is very important to me. But what has been identified is we are out of market. I don't think there's any-
I think everybody knows that.
Everybody knows that. And so, I think, in my perspective, those are very important things to me, because I think we still have to decide as a county, do we want to be the best? Do we want to be the bottom of the bottom, the middle of the bottom, the whatever? But I think that I really would love, and I know it's not going to happen, I guess, this year, for us to work together to say, "What do we, as a county, want to offer to our employee groups?" I know, because I did attend the session on Tuesday, we talked just briefly about healthcare, you know? But for me, that's neat, and it's great, but to me, it's all about, are all our employees moving towards the middle of the market? And do we have a strategy as two joint boards to get us there? And we're woefully behind. And I know we have more people, so it is harder. But I still think we need to be able to say to all employees, "We want to treat you all and give you the same percentages," or whatever, and we're working towards the same goal. But mine is compensation, because that is also what we put in our budget priority, so it's not news.
Okay. Who hasn't spoken about priorities? Tricia and Dwayne.
My first priority is compliance positions, and I will make sure that they are truly compliance. And Mrs. Mauer, I probably am the one that fought for this, because I'm the one that wanted to distinguish compliance positions from other positions, because I thought that was very important. Because in my view, if you have a compliance position that is required to meet the requirements, whether they be federal or state mandates, to me, it's non-negotiable. So, we will confirm that. But I was the one that asked to distinguish the, you know, the two columns. So, compliance positions, I see, is not even a, you know, not even a choice. But where there are choices, my first priority would be the 2.5%, but that would be for all our employees. Because I can only remember one year over the past, you know, 18 years that I've been involved in the budget, where there was a difference given to the administrators. And I think it was, you know, one of my first years on the board, I don't know if it was, you know, 2001, 2002, even 2000. And it was a symbolic act. It wasn't a lot of dollars, but it was symbolic. And in my view, I didn't understand it. It may have been my first year on the board, and I said, "Why are we treating these administrators differently?" I mean, we couldn't run our school system, just like we couldn't run it without the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the teachers. We couldn't run it without the administrators. I mean, they provide the support and the leadership. So, if we were to say, "We want to give 2.5%," or not, whether we want to or not, you know, if we were to differentiate between the administrators and the rest of the staff, to me, it would be sending a message that they are not of the same value, that they do not rate the same increase, you know, as the rest of the school employees. And I've always been an advocate for across the board, you know, whether you're in the cafeteria, whether you're the monitor on the bus, the teacher, they're all important. So, mine would be across the board. So, mine would be across the board. And, and I, I agree with, you know, Ms. Egan and my other colleagues about the, the market rate as well. We're not there yet, but thanks to Dr. Benson, we are getting there, we're making some progress. Now, I know, I know there is a, you know, dissension with, with some of the veteran teachers about why are we doing this for the, the teachers with less experience? But if we look, truly look at, at our comparison groups, and we can see that these are the employees that, you know, are not in the median, then I think we need to get up there. If we want Stafford County to be a competitive school district and to once again, and I say once again because years and years ago, people flocked to us, now they're not. We, we're having just as hard a time recruiting as, as a lot of others. And when you're, when you're at the bottom of the, the pay range, it, it makes it even more challenging. But, but we want to be able to not only recruit these teachers, but to retain them. And, and that's, we can only do that if we're gonna have, you know, market-based pay, so.
Okay. Thank you, Tricia. Dwayne?
Okay, I will not be that long. So, but that was very elegant.
Why can I say?
Very elegant. I, I have always been, and, you know, check the tape, I've always been pay raises first. Although, you know, I did, we did take the requirements drill and we put the 13 million down. Very, yeah, and Ferry Farm. And then, so anyway, long story short, it's 2.5, 2.5% COLA across the board. I think that's, that's, that's my number one priority and, and, and very equal with that is that paraprofessional. Remember that 2.1 COLA across the board for all our, our employees is, it's $5.2 million.
It's 2.5.
You said 2.1, but you need to go 5.
2.5.
2.5%. Sorry, sorry about that.
It's getting late.
It's getting late.
Dwayne, are you calling that compliance?
Please.
It's really 2.1.
Don't get me angry about compliance right now, I am not happy. All right, so, now, however, the compliance must-do, it's, I, I do believe that we have a compliance must-do list, that's very important, it's spot-on. The, so you have the $5.2 million for the 2.5% COLA across the board for all our employees, and then you have the para and the bus drivers and the monitors, and they're out $2.14 million. And that's from the bottom of the market after analysis. So, you have, you have $7.3 million in just the 2.5 COLA and getting the paras up. And it, so it's, and, and so it goes back to, you know, some folks were talking about, gosh, forgive me for saying the categorical funding word, you know, I, I think, and this is Dwayne, I, I think we would be really, really pleased if the Board of Supervisors would say, or Dwayne would be very pleased, if, if the Board of Supervisors would say, hey, you know, we're gonna pay our folks 2.5% and we're gonna give the school board 2.5% raise. Compliance and everything else, school board, you figure that out with state money and salary laps. I mean, just, just think about it, if you, if we can, $5.2 million from you all to take care of these raises, that would take a big burden. And this is Dwayne, that would take a big burden off our back. And then, we could really kind of get down to the nuts and bolts of not really arguing much with you all about this unless we had something very serious to, to bring, you know? We know, we know every year you all are gonna pay our folks our COLAs, and we, we appreciate that, and, but here's that one other thing, you know, for this year. And that, that would take all this, all this angst out of this process, have us figure out, and this is me, and have us figure out, because right now, we, we, we get, we have a couple of million dollars a year in salary laps and we have, and we, and we hopefully we get money from the state. And so.
All right. Okay, thank you, Dwayne. So, I, I think it's actually a, a good time to, Mr. Foley shared with us today, and we weren't gonna bring it up, but I think it's something to talk about for next year. And it's something called commonality that he did in Albemarle when it related to working with the school division and the, and the Board of Supervisors. So, I'm gonna let him explain it. It won't, it's not a conversation for this year, but it's something we can, oh, Bruce knows all about it.
Well, he was the one.
Right, exactly. So, I'm gonna let, right.
I just gotta make sure he's right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I was looking at you. Thank you for putting me on the spot.
Sorry, Tom, the timing was too good.
No, I'm just kidding. Because of the comments brought forward by a board member about how Spotsylvania implemented their pay raise, which made a distinction between administrative staff and teachers, I commented on how Albemarle had done basically the same thing. And it, there was a joint compensation strategy that was formally adopted by vote, by both boards that was followed every year. And one of the components was that teachers would be treated differently in terms of their raises based upon market data for teachers, which is generally different than the market data that would justify a raise for administrative staff. And so, everyone in both the school system and the local government, all the administrative employees and the teachers realized that that was part of the strategy, and it was based upon a market approach. That meant that if teachers were further behind, then more dollars would go to get the teachers closer to market, even if the administrative staff who weren't as far behind didn't get as big a raise. It made sense to everybody, it's logical and so forth. So, the, the, the way that we go about it here with just one number for administrative and teachers regardless of where they stand against the market, doesn't really fit with a market approach. So, the other component of that that was important was that whether you were a, an administrative assistant in a local government department or in a school department, you got the same raise. So, the classified employees, the non-teaching positions, would always get the same raise regardless of whether they worked for local government or schools. And that was part of the strategy as well. So, those are two components to a strategy that I don't care if it's Albemarle or, you know, Orange County, makes sense based on a market approach and doesn't lump everybody together. It costs more money to give a 2.5% raise to everybody than it would to make a differentiation there based on market data. The other component of this that I think is important, that was also part of the strategy there, was something that I've heard here that's in dispute, which is the benchmark localities that we compare with the market and an agreement on who is in the market. Because I think every time we talk about the market, if everybody doesn't agree on who those localities are, then the market is always discredited. So, that's a third component of a joint strategy, which is that both boards would agree on who that market is. And I can tell you, and Bruce can tell you, we spent, I think, a year getting a full agreement on what the market was, and then for 12 years, we used that market. Sometimes you, you may feel that to be more competitive, you want to be in the top quartile of a market for teacher, to be more competitive, but you still use the same localities for comparison. So, I think that, I think the main issue here is, and I'm short-tempered here, Bruce is on his way out the door, but these two boards don't work together very well right now. And I think part of the reason is we don't have a strategy together that we've developed that gets rid of some of the disagreements or works through, let's not argue about what the market is, let's decide together what the market is. Then, we don't argue about that every year. It's, it's decided. There's a strategy on a differentiation between teachers and administrative staff that gets decided as part of the strategy, you don't argue about it. So, anyways, those were the things that I shared. Bruce is familiar with these and he can add to it and perhaps even correct me if I've gotten some of it wrong.
No, you got it. I just, I wouldn't pick 27 different comparison groups, which is what Albemarle has.
Right, I agree, yeah. It was actually 30.
And then, the other, the other part that goes along with compensation is your benefits package, right? And, and the two organizations, whether you were in local government or schools, had the same benefits package.
Right. And that's something we're struggling with here too on our healthcare, on premiums and so forth. We also don't have a shared self-insurance pool, which makes that something we should be talking about.
I'd just like to make one comment. I think that sounds very promising to explore, but before we talk about the same raise for the same positions, we have to make sure that our positions are where they need to be. And I'll give an example, it's our administrative assistants in the schools. We know that they're under-market, or I'll speak for myself, you know, I believe they're under-market, and I know we're initiating a study with that. So, if we were going to take an approach that all the administrative assistants got the same raise, I'd want to make sure that, that the starting point for that program, everybody was on the same playing field. So, that, and that's just an example of one position. I think that's gonna be important.
And I left one thing out, and that is that there's one HR department that does the study for all administrative assistants regardless of where they are. So, they're considered a group under one HR department.
And the other thing also is their job description, which would.
Yeah, Jack Cavallier will head that department up, is that what I understand? Nice.
Dr. Benson, did you have something to add there?
No, no, just that, that getting folks into market is really important, and we know that, that is a challenge on the local government side, it's a challenge on our side as well. I mean, if you could get everybody into the market, the, the adjustments you have to make on an annual basis to stay in the market will be relatively small. And then, those percentage increases across the board from a commonality perspective are really easy to deal with.
Okay. All right, anybody have anything else to add? We can actually get out a little early.
Thank you.
No? Thank you very much.
I'll take, hey, I'll take it.